This will be a meeting of the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees, January 13, 2022. Roll call, please.
Cliff.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Report from Hennessy United Board. Barbara.
Bert.
I don't have any.
Yeah, I think, are we going to meet this week, maybe?
I haven't heard.
I don't know.
Okay. Item three is Consider Approval Consent Agenda. Minutes of December meetings. Approval of claims as follows. December Purchase Orders 2006-01-10. January Purchase Orders 25,002-45-16. January Restricted Sales Tax Fund 59,236-76. January Library Fund 1,750-11. January Street and Alley Fund 51-37. Accept the following reports: Treasure, Library, Police, and Quarterly Reports. And approve of budget amendments. Are there any?
Yeah, there is.
Ah, Sam, yes. So we're increasing the police fund. Is that due to?
Gasoline.
Gasoline?
Yeah, we totally missed that budget up somehow. I don't know.
It would be like $25 for gas for the year.
Yeah.
For every police.
Yeah, totally. It was like, we've been in there like $250. Yeah, it was totally.
So this is just an expend, I mean, this is just an addition to the budget.
Yeah.
And then general government.
With travel and training.
Okay. Anybody got any additions or corrections to the consent agenda? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes. Okay. Citizen comments? You go. Okay. Town administrators' report.
You have my report in there. The only thing that I want to point out is tomorrow is Katie's last day. We're going to miss her. I appreciate everything that she's done.
Likewise. And I'm crowding Katie.
I seen it.
She is going to continue on as clerk, so you will get to see her every month here. So she will continue as town clerk. But we are going to miss her every day in the office. But other than that, we do have a new part-time dispatcher. But, and don't forget our planning meeting, February 5.
Okay.
And the election is February 8.
8?
Yes.
Katie? It's not my business, but I'm curious, where are you calling?
Too quick.
Oh, okay. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wish you, wish you well there, Katie. And thanks for your, thanks for your service, and you're not done.
And I will say, I will put a plug in. She is going for more money, and that is another reason why I am going to push this pay scale. But we're going to talk about that here in a few.
Okay. Okay. You have anything else on your report?
On this planning committee, can you briefly describe what it's going to be about? Is it going to be infrastructure, everything like police, parks, streets?
Yes.
That's the thing?
Mm-hmm.
Is it going to be what I call community projects, like the proposed dome, the library?
What do you mean, the proposed dome?
Oh, proposed dome. I mean, pub, yeah.
No.
It's not going to cover that?
No.
Okay.
Because to me, that's more like, like, you know, we're going to start off with our infrastructure meeting. Like, planning for us to be able to help us prepare budgets. Then we're going to go with more of a community planning meeting where we want people to get involved on what they want to see in the community, such as a pavilion, or maybe they want us to build a new park, or they want us to build a new skate park, or they want us to build a, something like that. That is our next step after this.
That's marvelous.
This meeting is more of, we want, our city departments are putting together what they want to see over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. What their, what they see is their capital needs.
Well, to me, you're doing exactly right. Kingfisher, they have a two-day meeting, and this is a two-day meeting, except the days are split, whereas I think Kingfisher puts them back together.
So, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, will you have sort of items, so that we know, we can maybe get people in the community to come at a certain time?
As we're going to put a, I am going to put an agenda together.
Okay.
And by the 20, I think I put in here the 24th, I am going to have all the departments' items accumulated. So we will have preliminary items for the board to start out with. The board may, or people may add to those items, take away, prioritize, just different things. But yeah, we will have, like, we may start with the streets, you know, the street department at nine o'clock, or, you know, but I will have an agenda. I've talked to the moderator, and she's going to help me, kind of.
Is this someone from the state that's going to be moderating?
Noda.
Okay.
I appreciate you getting that to us early, because it allows us to start thinking about it and getting our thoughts together. And I'm kind of assuming we just take street departments to, to, and I'll see if I can repeat what you just said. The street departments would like to do this in the next five years, and then the street department would like to have this done in the next, within the next 10 years. Yes?
Yes. Marvelous.
Okay. Other scheduled business? Discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following?
Wait a minute. I got one question. Looking at, on this offer edition, it said bids were open yesterday, January 12th. They came in about double to what we anticipated. How much was that?
I think that was it, right? Run around 237, 236, something like that.
Do we have money for that?
Hmm.
Or would I have to go for some kind of grant?
It would be tight. It would be tight. That's why the engineer is seeing what they can do.
Trying to come up with some alternatives?
But I talked today, so, I was in a meeting with Jay right before this.
All right. Other scheduled business? Discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. Item A is Discussion with Possible Action to Adopt Pay Scale for Employees to Implement It until we handle. We did this last month, and we said we would table it for a month and take it under further review.
Tiffany, when would this take effect?
July 1st.
Of what year?
2022.
22.
2022.
So it would be in our next budget cycle.
Six months from now.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't really have to make a decision tonight, because we could postpone this again after the financial planning meeting in January.
What financial?
Whatever these, this planning committee, the planning meeting you've got set up.
So, but I'm going to have to start working on budget. So that's why I'm trying to get it, because I'm going to have to start working on budget, so.
Now, in the last meeting, you indicated if we made this change instantly, how much would that cost? How much would we pump the budget up each month?
Each month?
Or for 12 months? I think you gave a 12-month figure. I forgot what that was.
Like $110,000?
Yeah.
A hundred little, you know.
From where we are right now, but employees are getting this next paycheck, they're getting a raise, so it won't be up that much.
My problem is, do we have the money to do that? I mean, we all want to pay our employees. They work so hard. But in, Mr. Man, here, what we got?
Foley's looking for that, Tiffany. Have you got a, have a good enough feel on this year's budget, on the actual, what our revenue has been, that, that you think we can sustain this next year without a problem?
I do.
Okay. And I, I totally trust you to have that information.
Yes, that's it.
Can you, can you, this should have been distributed.
All right, one, Katie?
Yeah.
It's all right.
Barbara, do you have a copy?
Yes.
Yeah. We cut this budget down to August 2020, page 2. We eliminated two positions. We eliminated service contracts, and then you followed up and did some other budget cutting. I know you worked hard on that. For 2020, the average monthly income was $98,866. Going to 2021, I forgot, I haven't kept this up, and I don't have April, May, and June, but I do have nine months. Those nine months are average $104,399. So we're not much above 2020, with all these severe budget cuts. The assumption, the figure we worked with on page three, that was if we had $120,000 monthly sales tax income, along with the user tax income, which is average about $18,000 a year, that would be the break-even point. And with, I wish I had April, May, and June in here, but with $104,000, I don't see how we can afford jumping the salaries of $110,000 for the year. Now, we, I don't think we, we're on a new normal, but we don't know what the new normal is. If you look at September 2021, we got a nice bump there, $128,657.
So you're only doing sales tax, but you're, but the budget is based on use and sales tax.
Yeah.
And if you look, if you look on page four in your quarterly financial reports. This year, there's only been one month. Because July, we were real close, and there's only, August is the only year that we were down.
Now, I recognize the user taxes, or users, you know, page three, I had that in the foot, you know, $120,000.
No, on this page two.
If you look at November, the sales taxes was 100, almost 106,000, and add the 18,000 for the user tax, that takes it to 123,000, 3,000 above the break-even point. December was 100,352. If you add 18, 20,000 for the user tax, that takes 120,000, which is the break-even point. I look at the 2021 data, and I need a longer trend to see where we are. What is the new normal? And I don't see the money in there for $110,000.
Tiffany, our, this is just looking at one aspect of the town's revenue. Correct me if I'm wrong, but utility authority money goes over to help pay salaries, correct?
Correct.
Is the utility authority keeping up, or more than keeping up, with the employees' salaries in those departments?
Yes.
My problem, Bert, is I don't see the detail, the income report for the town, or for the utilities authority, to just boom, approve $110,000. After last month's meeting, I got home and started thinking about it. We were hit with, our latter fir truck proposal, we were hit with the police pension fund and the employees, increasing employees.
Time out. What latter truck proposal are we hit with? I mean, I'm just trying to get, because I'm losing. I'm losing a very good employee for money. And I'm about ready to lose a bunch of good employees because of money. And to me, we have not been giving raises, and now you've given me the opportunity to give raises, but I, and I'm not talking like, I, I don't think it's fair for me, or the next town administrator, to sit here and go, well, Katie needs this much, and Shelley needs this much, because a person you get in here could be unfair, to tell you the truth. And I don't think that, for the town, I don't think that that's right. And I'm trying to protect the town. So I, myself, would prefer something like this to protect the town and the future of the town, because I don't want somebody to get in here and be able to play favorites, or to play, or not give raises. I'm trying to protect these employees.
What I'd like to see is a budget for the last fiscal year, five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, using the income, and with and without the employee raise, both for the town, City of Tennessee, and for the utilities authority. I'd like to see where that $110,000 is coming from.
I feel that we need to do this. I asked for this, the scale, because we, several times, we've been in special sessions, and we would go through raises, and I said, we need a scale, so we need to know where the money's coming from. And I mean, so, and the employee knows, okay, when I do this, I get this, and when I get that. And right now, it's hard to have good employees. Good employees are leaving. And we need to have a schedule, and we need to have their pay a little bit better, because it's not competitive.
Cliff, I agree 100% with you and Tiffany, but I need to see where the money is.
Well, I trust Tiffany. She's hired as our town administrator. She's in charge of our finances, and I trust her to tell us that this is doable. I think it's doable.
I'd like to see, I would like to see a financial statement, with and without.
We've got quarterly.
Here's a annual financial statement, and here's a quarterly financial statement. I don't.
What about the new businesses that are coming to town? That's going to raise the tax income, too. Businesses that are being built right now, that's going to increase sales.
For sure.
For sure. But, look at the 2021 data.
But that's only sales tax.
That's just the.
That doesn't include what you're getting in utilities, or from police department fines, or, I mean, that's not your only source. It's your main source, I agree. Sales tax is your main source, but good luck in trying to figure out what's going to happen in five years from now with sales tax. I mean, who would have thought we would have had COVID, too?
Yeah. I don't think we'll have a repeated COVID, I think it'll.
I think it'll continue for a while, though.
Probably have some variations, I suppose.
You are starting to set spills down, so.
Yep, sure. Yeah. Oklahoma City.
Kingfisher.
Yeah, when we pay $913 an hour, that's not living wage, I agree.
And we're only paying, these girls only making $10.
Richard, I've been here for almost nine years, and I've got a $1.75 raise in nine years. If I could drive, I will tell you now, I would be working at Kingfisher County Sheriff's Department for $16 an hour. I love my job here, but the pay is just, you can get better. I mean, let's face it.
We offer our employees a Cadillac benefit plan.
Absolutely.
But we are very short on what we pay in salary and hourly wage. And I don't want to continue, the employees that are sitting in this room are model employees. I don't want to lose Katie. I don't want to lose anymore. The employees that aren't in this room are model employees. We probably have, I've been associated with the town for a long time, and I would say overall, we probably have the best employee base that we've ever had. And I just feel like we have to keep them. And this isn't a document that the town board goes into executive session and says, well, so-and-so's been doing pretty good, so we're going to give them 4%, but, yeah, this one over here, they might just get 3.5, and I saw them even on a shovel. That, that isn't how, that isn't how this is set up to operate. So I think we're definitely, I think we're definitely on the right track. So a person comes in, they know what I'm going to make year one, year two, year three, and they see some potential of where they can go.
There's nothing said here that I disagree with, and I support it 100%. What I'd like to see is a budget as we are, and then with the increases factored in, with and without, before we vote. And this could be prepared for the next month's meeting. There's no urgency. It doesn't take effect till July. I want to see where that money is coming from.
I'm prepared to put it for vote and see where it goes. I make a motion to accept the pay scale that has been presented by the town administrator. Second. Roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Item B is Discussion with Possible Action to Accept the 2021 Town of Hennessy Audit. That is in your packet. Tiffany, do you have any input on the audit?
No, I don't.
Has anybody got any questions about the audit?
And how's our annual financial statement, and then our audit? There were no findings in our audit.
Good.
Okay.
I would point out that the year end of June 30, 2021, the general fund, total fund balance increased by $61,679. And general fund actual expenditures were under final appropriation by $77,749, which equates to a 6% positive variance. Restricted sales tax fund, actual expenditures were under final appropriations by $68,797, 4.8% positive variance. Yes, sir.
What is in the funds for the emergency account? Emergency service?
$0.
Mm-hmm.
That was in June, is that?
That was ending December.
Oh, okay.
I got that out of the quarterly.
Oh, so you didn't go off the audit, you went off of what you're seeing?
I went off the quarterly report, I threw December.
Oh, you do quarters now, you don't do?
We do both. I find it better to have the accountant check us quarterly.
They do in-house monthly, and Crawford's does quarterly.
That should make the end year easier.
Yes.
No surprises.
James, I, I know you said what we said tonight, and I know that your time on the board, you had concerns about ending fund balance. And our total ending fund balance, again, this is as of December, is $3,785,000.
I think when I started, it was either one or two million.
Well, it used, it used to be a battle to keep it in the black each year.
Yeah.
And so, I just wanted you to know that, because we've talked about fund balance many times.
I didn't know the luxury of the tax basis right now.
That's true.
I understand. I understand.
Not just because we're awarded.
Right. I totally understand.
I like to see it grow.
That's a good sign.
Yeah, and I applaud you for that, Tiffany. I'm, I'm very proud that it's down to $3.7 million.
Bert, what I'd like to see in the quarterly reports is more historical data. It makes it easier to understand which way we're trending.
I'm sorry, I can't hear your question?
It's not a question. I said, I'd like to see more historical data, you know, like a five-year period, or something like that.
That's better, that's for sure.
Anybody got any questions on the audit? If not, I'll make a motion to accept the 2020, 2021 Town of Hennessy Audit. I second that. Roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Item C is Discussion with Possible Action to Discuss Options with Future Business on Infrastructure Needs. Cliff, this has my name on it, because I know we brought up the fire department, and they expanded the fire department, and there was some discussion about the.
Yeah.
Library, are they going to be out, you know, are they going to be able still parking back, and some, there's not a whole lot of parking at the, at the library, so, one thing that, what?
Nothing.
Am I wrong?
No, I just wonder if mine had your name on it.
I don't know. I just, I might have mentioned that, that's why.
Oh.
Am I wrong? Hey, I'm wrong.
I thought it was for me.
Oh, okay.
No, go ahead, if you want to talk.
But anyway, I heard some concerns about not having parking for the, for the library.
For the library. Yeah. We were going to address that.
Yeah.
At the planning meeting, when.
Right.
When we said.
So I apologize.
No, that, no, 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 that's fine.
It's fine. I think that is, that complex will be discussed in the planning meeting.
Okay. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have, we're getting ready to get a. We have, we're getting ready to get a proposal or a building plan from Howdy Truck Plaza.
Howdy Truck Plaza.
This is right here is Highway eighty-one. This is the road that goes to Matusek's Bat, right here. And then this is that, where they've been doing dirt work, in that little center aisle in there. Right south of the disposal, right over here. Right over here is the disposal. But anyway, they're wanting to do a travel plaza. They came to me and they said, how could the city get us water, sewer? And then they want us to, sorry, they want us to pave them a road right here, I think to right here. To be able to get semis in there, because the semi, they're wanting the traffic to go right here. The semis in there. So I had our engineer draw up an estimate, and it was a half a million dollars. There is water and sewer, you know, over here on Scotty's addition. So to get water and sewer over here, and then to pave that was a half a million dollars. I checked with Noda about an economic development loan, or grant. That grant cycle is not until the fall, applications are due in August. But then we would not find out anything until January. And then by the time, if we were awarded in January, then we probably, it would still be another year and a half, whatever, before we can get construction. They're already moving dirt, so they're wanting to move pretty quickly. So I talked to Noda, Vicki, they're at, for, about economic development, and she mentioned that Ringwood, they had Dollar General come to Ringwood, and they did an economic development agreement that the Dollar General, because they needed water, the Dollar General would put in the water line, and then Ringwood would return some of the sales tax every quarter to the Dollar General.
Okay.
Until
Until that was paid back.
Until that was paid back. So I have mentioned that to these people, and they are taking it to their banker to see if that's even possible.
So about like Walmart did today, or Ena did with Walmart?
That's probably something.
Where they had them build the streets and all that stuff.
That's probably, might be something that they've done to them too.
Tiffany, these stores, or store, I see three structures there that
Well, actually, this is the store, this would be the, the car fuel island.
Car fuel and the truck.
And then this would be the truck fuel.
So they will get access to A1 highway?
Yes. But they need access back there too.
And is that not the disposal right there now?
No, it's clear over here.
What is that structure right there by where it says truck fuel, right up about one o'clock from mid?
That's where they're gonna put their fuel tanks.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now, let me, I'm confused.
I'm confused.
Now I'm gonna show you something.
So that's all this side of the railroad tracks.
Tiffany, the arrow key.
Yes.
The arrow key all the way to the left.
That's all, yes.
But that's not really an extension of Main Street back there, I mean, isn't that what it's showing, Main Street?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's an extension of Main Street.
Okay.
You know how you're coming down Main Street and then you go like this?
Oh, good, yes.
Then it is an extension of Main Street.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Let me just show you the inside of the building. Maybe. I had to take a picture of this, that's fine. This is the inside of the building. If you can see. They're gonna have a truckers lounge, they're gonna have a laundry room for the truckers. They're gonna have, this is the walk-in. They're also gonna have a, a restaurant, they're not sure who it's gonna be yet, but they're looking for someone to come in and, and do a restaurant there.
Does it say how many square feet they're adding?
Sixty. By a hundred and twenty-five.
Seventy by one twenty-five?
Sixty by one twenty-five.
I'm sorry.
Wow.
Over seven thousand, there's another one.
So. This store, they're looking at the first six months, they're predicting bringing in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month, and then by the end of the first year, at least two hundred thousand dollars a month.
You mean, what, in sales tax money?
In sales.
Okay, that's what I
Total gross sales.
Yeah.
Not sure how much taxable versus untaxable, because cigarettes are not taxable.
What they, what they estimate for the first year?
For the first six months, a hundred and fifty.
Per month?
Uh huh.
That's five thousand a day, that's, that's not undoable, I mean, that's
And then, they're talking about two hundred thousand in fuel a month.
That's on top of the fuel?
Uh huh.
Oh. Okay, I thought it was combined versus fuel.
No, it's on top of, of fuel.
What would stop them from slowing down for them to do that?
So I don't, that's what they're, that's what they're telling me. So.
Maybe the idea of the trucker, you're outside, whether you wanna stay and stop in Hennessy, or you're gonna stop in Kingfisher, you're gonna stop in, you know, I'm stopping, if I'm driving a truck over there, I'm stopping in.
Why is that?
Because I can get a Uber, go anywhere I want to eat. Do whatever I want to do.
You can get a what?
A Uber.
Uber, Uber.
Uber, oh.
A Uber. I said Uber, Uber.
Oh, and Uber, oh, to get something to eat, oh, okay.
A ride.
I just, where, where is this business coming from? That road, that road ain't that well-traveled to. You know, eighty-one is your main traffic, you need less.
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one is pretty well-traveled by trucks too.
Yeah, not that much.
It's gonna have facilities, it's gonna have restaurants, it's gonna have sleeping facilities, restrooms, showers, everything for them.
It's gonna be a twenty-four-seven.
I understand, I understand all that, I've, I've lived in truck stops, I just, you know, I just don't see where the, you know, most truckers would look for the bigger towns when they're driving from point A to point B. You know, if I wanna get a night rest, I might stop at Hennessy.
I don't, I've just been seeing all the trucks around here, and there's a lot that are being parked.
I, I would assume, Harold, if somebody's willing to make that kind of an investment, they've probably done a lot of studies and traffic counts and, and think they can do it, but but I know where you're coming from, I don't wanna put a half a million dollars of the town's money in there, especially since we don't have a half a million laying around to put in. And then have this fail within the first couple of years or something.
We also got four other quick stops in the town that you're on, say you're gonna pull business out of him to support this.
Well.
And it may be extra business though, Harold, it may be, like you're saying, the over-the-road trucker that wouldn't have turned down fifty-one to go to Eagle Stop, but he's got a place here that he would pull in, you follow me?
Right.
You know, I, I mean, I don't know, I, I'll tell you through three ways of looking at this, number one, I'm, I'm all for community development and getting our community to grow. And we've, we're pretty landlocked, and that's one area we can go. The other thing is a person who sends the tax commission sales tax every month, I know that we're gonna hear from other businesses why, you know, you've never helped me with my business by letting me borrow from my sales tax payments. So I feel like we're gonna hear some of that. So I think we need to, I think we need to weigh our options, I wish we could get a grant, but they're too far out, sounds like.
Um.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue, if, if they're gonna have that kind of sales, I really don't have an issue with them paying for it, and we let them retain some of their sales tax. But I am, I am telling you all, we're gonna hear from the existing businesses.
Well, what would happen is, they would, in this, they would still pay the tax commission, and then we would make a, like a quarterly payment back to them. Monthly, quarterly, whatever, payment back to them.
Based on what they're paying in?
Based either, yes.
So if they pay in twenty thousand dollars in a month, we're gonna, which should be more than that, but they're, we're gonna give them a percentage of that back, and not the same amount every month regardless of what they put in.
If we're going to give them, yes, whatever we decide, we would give them back.
So how much is actually the sewer and the water?
Um, we figured out it was two hundred and twenty-four, eight seventy-five for the street, we think. Or it's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the street, two hundred and thirty for the street.
Yeah, we're saying, hang on, but how do you build the street?
Well, we talked about them putting in the water and the sewer, because they really need that to start. And then we could figure out something maybe to do with the street.
I mean, didn't Ena tell Walmart, you gotta do the streets around, what I understand?
That's what I heard, yeah. I don't, I mean, I don't know that officially, but that's what I struggle.
Question. Remember years ago when y'all made the deal, or the town board made the deal with the school?
Yes.
And you gave them free water?
Yes.
For so long, is that anything that could work, or would that be, go against us?
I don't know that it'd go against us, Barb, I don't know, and I I don't know what kind of water usage a facility like that's gonna have.
Usually they don't have
They're not gonna have a car wash, or, okay.
No, I don't think that, the, I don't think the water and stuff would be
Probably be a pretty slow return, the reason it worked so good with the schools, because they were irrigating the football field.
Right, the football field, I know, yeah. I just assumed they would be having showers or
Well, they are.
And bathrooms and everything.
But I just don't know how much.
I don't think it would.
I don't know how much volume that's gonna create.
Right.
Tiffany, when, when, when does a decision need to be made on this?
Um, he's gonna take the paperwork to his bank and see if that's even doable for him to be able to I don't have, I mean, I just have an example of what Ringwood did, to see if he's even able to, to do something like that. So, I mean, we can table it, and then you guys think over it, and then I've talked to John, John says it's something that we can do. So it is doable.
Okay.
Um, so, and then I have a call into DOT to see if perhaps maybe we can get some millings off of Highway fifty-one.
Some what?
Some millings, some of those millings.
Oh.
For that road, just to give us a temporary base, you know. Um, so.
That's an all-weather road right now. I'm saying it's not a muddy road, it's a rock road, it's an all-weather road.
But we need to widen it.
What are they anticipating?
Because you take semis.
Okay.
Turning and, we're, we're gonna have to widen it, I think.
What's the amount of this project? Did they, I mean, have they got some kind of a figure what it's gonna cost them?
For what?
Build?
To build all this.
To build.
To build all their structures.
Oh, I think, I don't remember what I heard.
Okay.
We haven't.
We haven't got the building permit yet.
Yeah, okay.
So when we get that, it would be on the building permit.
I bet that costs a lot.
So like, on this five hundred thousand, on this deal and the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand deal on the Osborne mission, is it, that somehow, to get, uh, is that gonna be kinda, coming out at the same time?
Well, that's why I told them we couldn't do it all.
I mean, that's asking us seven hundred and fifty thousand.
That's why I told them we couldn't do it all. That's why I said, maybe we can go this other route. Because us, you know, if he pays and he does this, and then we're just say, you know, our sales tax is four percent, and we're giving him back three, you know, we're giving him back the three percent, and we're only taking the one percent for the next, say, seven years, we're still gaining what we, gaining some that we never had. You see what I'm saying?
Tiffany, if that, if that structure, if they're going to spend I don't know what, I'm gonna say five million dollars. Four percent sales tax on the material for that, and I realize that five million is a non-material. That would be a two hundred thousand dollar windfall in our sales tax right there, just on the material for the construction. So we would be seeing money come into the town from day one. I, I think you're on the right track, I think, see what his banker will do, and then bring that to us, and we'll go from there.
Well, I think once this is put in, I think we're liable to see more come. I really think, if this, I think you're gonna start seeing more stuff go north.
And, you know, on our agenda, we're talking about infrastructure needs for future business, and you've brought up a very good point. We need, we are going to need to run water lines up there, we're gonna have to put fire hydrants up there, and we don't need to just run A-line, we need to loop. A dead-end line is not a good thing. And loop it around and tie it back in, so there is, there is some money to be spent by the town, and I think that possibly ought to be looking into grants, the, the problem is, I see it, is this stuff springing up on us all at one time?
Yes, and that's why I wanna do the five, ten, fifteen year, and I told the employees, don't look here, look here because of this.
Exactly, exactly. Because I don't want Hennessy's infrastructure needs are gonna be in five years from now, but we need to be prepared.
Exactly.
Tiffany, can some of the town's reserves be tapped for this project? It's just such a great opportunity. What was the question I was?
Could the Hennessy's reserves be tapped?
Oh.
I don't know that our reserves are that deep.
Well, I compliment you on working the alternatives to get this project. I'm agreeing with you, Bert. I think, as I look at these small towns in western Oklahoma, they're withering away. And I see some of the things that Ena's doing, they're providing a lot of financial incentives on that project there on Cleveland and, what do they call it, I think they call it, the district.
And I think this is stuff that Ena's doing, and, you know, I think these are types of things that people are doing is, is they're giving, these are the sales tax incentives that people, they're giving back.
For years and years, I've heard we need to get more businesses into town. And now we've got people practically And now we've got people practically begging us to bring in those businesses. If there's a way to work with them, I think we need to work.
I agree. I, I just think this would really be very beneficial for Hennessy.
Well, they said they're gonna hire fifteen to twenty employees, so...
Right there's the big shot, you know?
I have to think there'd be some spinoffs.
And everyone might, well, the restaurant, you know, will probably, I don't know, I've never talked to these people, but I imagine will be an independent franchise type, type restaurant. Probably a fast food type, or, do you know?
Could be, it might be a sit-down. Don't know yet, we're talking to a couple of different ones.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it'd probably be a fast food restaurant, I'd say.
Trying to get more of a new sit-down, I've been encouraging that.
Yeah. Well, they maybe can do a combination.
Mm-hmm. I think it would be a restaurant supported by travelers on eighty-one and provide to locals. You know, we've lost two, kinda, two restaurants on Main Street, if you will. And this restaurant would probably, I would guess, open every day.
Yes.
About twenty-four-seven?
Mm-hmm.
The way, I don't know about the restaurant part, but the truck stop portion.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Tiffany, for your job.
And he also said that he's going to support the schools, so, he's gonna give, like, two cents, two cents per gallon to the schools?
Good.
So, I'll put that in my notes.
Money may be able to work out a deal with the police field, or town field, not just, but, you know?
All right. Item D is discussion with possible action to discuss the ladder truck. Richard?
Well, I have a handout, and, uh, going back to last month's meeting, I got hit with three things. Just might be me, but, uh, today, police function, police engine, excuse me, and the salary structure, and the fire truck. And when I got home, I got to thinking about it. Uh, we did the two million dollar pool, we had community-wide meeting to review the proposals, and then we had a community vote on the pool. The justification for the ladder truck, Bert, was the dome and the motel.
No, no, let me stop you for a minute. Those were just used as an example. Uh, those were used as examples because of their large size and structure. We've already got other buildings in town that exceed the square footage, like the high school and, uh, Ecro seed company that exceeds a square footage. So, what, what, what we're saying, and, and the town wasn't hit for a proposal, because this isn't something, something that is going to happen in the, in a year. This is something to look at five years, or three years, whatever. ISO comes in and does a rating every five years. And we are very fortunate to have a Class Three, which we discussed last month. And, uh, what the fire department's proposing to do is to be prepared so that as we get expansion and as things grow, that we don't have an inspection period that, that we get, again, every five years, that they come along and say, "You've got too many buildings that exceed either two stories in height or square footage, and your rating is gonna go from a three to a five, or we're three to a six." So...
That's based on the soon growth, or how many do you, is that based on large existing buildings now within Hennessy?
Yes.
What are they?
They, they can, there can be six. And, uh, the motel, because it's three stories, the high school, because of square footage. Uh, I want to say the Christian churches in that square footage as well.
Ecro's?
Ecro seed company, sure. And, uh, in all honesty, we're, we're bumping, we're bumping it really hard. And what we don't want to see is happen...
What do you mean by bumping it really hard?
We're bumping either having our rating decreased to a higher level, go from a three to a four or five, if we're not able to serve those needs. What ISO does, they come in, and they pick thirteen buildings this last time that we had to provide fire hydrant flows. They have calculations that, that I can give you based on the building's construction, based on, uh, the square footage, based on occupancy, that they say it's going to take two thousand gallons of flow per minute to put that building out. Now, the problem that we have, you mentioned in your handout that the dome was concrete, and, and we're fully aware of that. The problem that we have, Richard, is not, not the dome, but figured into our fire flow requirement are all of these framed joisted masonry buildings downtown. And, uh, it's a very complicated formula that ISO uses. ISO will not coach a community into a better rating, because they're not gonna come in and say, "If you will do this, this, and this, you're gonna drop to a three or a two." They don't do that. They, they, that, that would be like, uh, for instance, a nursing home being inspected by the health department, and them, send them a list of what they're gonna look at before they go there. They don't do that. They wanna come in and they wanna see how ready we are to extinguish fires on that day with, with the building load that we've got in the community.
So, they did, they did it by thirteen areas or buildings that are problem areas?
They're not necessarily problem areas, Richard. Uh, they, out of these thirteen, they're not all over the square footage limit by any means, but they wanna see, in our biggest buildings, what are we capable of flowing? So, we test the fire hydrants. Each of our engines are rated at twelve-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute. So, we test the fire hydrants, then it's figured in how much we can pump through the engines, and, uh, and see if we can meet the fire flow requirement for that building.
Uh, fire trucks are not only used to extinguish tall buildings, they're also help to extend or put out housing additions.
Correct.
If the houses are too close together, and you can't get into the backyard, use the fire ladder truck to get to the part, am I right?
You're correct.
When you're only building these alleys five or six foot apart from each other, and there's no access to the alley, that's how you gotta do it, right?
Yeah, we've either gotta put somebody back there, you know, with a, with a hose line behind a house. And we had a structure fire here last spring where we didn't have an alley access, we had a fence.
It's over by my house?
By your house, yes.
I was worried.
And, uh, uh, any, so, and maybe, maybe I'm not addressing what you're, what you're wanting to know, but...
Well, I know it's highly complicated.
And primarily, primarily, Richard, I, I think, I think what you, you really need to grasp is that, uh, this isn't, the, the ladder truck portion of station addition would be paid for out of county sales tax.
I'm aware of that.
Has nothing to do with town of Hennessy budget, nothing.
I'm aware of that.
Um, the ladder truck would be a town of Hennessy expenditure. However, there may be county sales tax money available at that time to help with that. Now, the, the other thing I really wanna point out is, in a way, are we looking at buying a ladder truck the minute that building expansion's done? We want to be prepared. So, if ISO comes along and we've got an immediate need, then we, we're prepared. We're trying to plan ahead and be prepared for something that, uh...
Or you've done a marvelous job.
Is coming down, is coming down the road. We just don't know, we don't know how far we are from that point.
Well, I, you know, when we were voting on the new zoning building code, whatever you wanna call it, I called the state insurance office, I, I'll repeat it, I've thought that, but...
Yeah.
You've taken the ISO number from a low eight to three.
Mm-hmm.
Each time we move up one level, I asked the lady there, I can't remember her name, that it lowers the fire insurance to the property owners by four to six percent. So, my, I looked at my fire insurance, it's about two thousand, what I carry, so you're saving me about seven hundred dollars.
A year.
A year.
So, you take that times, how many houses, how many water bills? 'Cause it also is with the commercial property. We do roughly a thousand water bills a month?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. So, based on that, you're looking at eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year that we have been putting back into property owner's pocket. And if I may, not to take a lot of time, but I brought one photograph I'd like to put up on the, the screen. If I can get it to, if I'm technical enough to make it do it.
You take mine out and you take yours in.
Must be upside down. Need some help, Bert. What do we, what do we do from there?
Hit the back button.
The arrow on the left side.
Close?
Close.
Any ideas?
Um, hit the back button again.
It's up at the top right, that square.
The plus?
Mm-hmm. No.
I don't know what you...
Feel free to come help in. I'm not technical enough.
No, that's hitting a new folder, that's adding a new folder, just hit the back button. Or hit close. There. No, it's not showing.
Is it not a Samsung card?
No. So, you put it in, is it all the way in? It's not showing.
I couldn't see it.
Hit the back, hit the back button.
Yeah.
Is that one of your files?
Hit the back button. There. Double.
Whoa, that's pretty great.
Yeah.
This is a downtown fire that we had twelve, fourteen years ago. And the fire started in this building. The fire got into the old Oddfellow's Hall and wound up destroying both of these buildings. This is ENIT's ladder truck, right here. When the fire erupted through that, and that's a window, a two-story window, had they not been there, and I'm gonna talk about what you're seeing right here in this little circle in just a minute, had they not been there when that fire had erupted, I, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, you've been doing this nearly as long as I have, but I would be willing to bet about anything I've got that we would've lost the rest of that block. Had we had a ladder truck immediately, I think we could've confined the fire to the first building. I'm not sure we could've completely saved the first building. But this is what some of the, some of the potential is. And I'm, and, once again, I don't want anybody to get the idea I'm trying to sell a ladder truck right now, I'm not. But I just wanna point out, because in your, in your compilation, said something about we could launch a water stream, I think you said about forty feet?
The, for a pumper truck, is my understanding that firefighters don't wanna go higher than forty feet with a pumper truck.
Okay. The, uh, our ground lines, if we were shooting water from the ground, our ground lines, an inch and a half will deliver about hundred, little over hundred, hundred and...
Hundred twenty-five.
Hundred twenty-five gallons a minute of water. This nozzle is delivering between a thousand and twelve-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute. So, it's crucial, um, when you have something of that magnitude, and these guys, I sent a letter to the editor of the ENIT newspaper thanking their citizens for providing this equipment and thanking their fire department for allowing it to come down here. It's the fire chief's call. When we called for that piece of equipment, he could've easily said, well, it could've been out on an emergency in ENIT, or he easily could've said, "I can't let it go, I've gotta protect my own city." In addition to ENIT, what you can't see is on the backside of that alley, Guthrie had a ladder truck there as well. And, uh, it's, there again, I just wanted to point out, you know, that, that it's not about these two buildings. It's about our town downtown, our entire downtown structure, uh...
Bert, I thank you very much for explaining this to me. And I was going on the dome and the, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine. Correct. And we, and Richard, we did use those as examples of major structures, we did. But, uh...
The ENIT fire department, by the way, has these pictures in their building.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And the fire truck they sent down, they're still using?
Yes, they are. In fact, I saw it today.
It is, right across the street from us.
There were probably a hundred people out there. I thought about several members. I think you took that, your bill, just a picture.
If I had seen this, if I had seen this last month, I wouldn't have raised the questions that I did.
Yeah. Well, Richard, let me tell you, that guy right there in the blue shirt and I, combined have eight years of experience on the Hennessy Fire Department. So, feel free, if you've got a question, call one of it. We'll be glad to try to explain it. The, the other thing I was gonna say, had we lost that block, I don't know how many of those businesses would've built back. I'm afraid we would've had a big hole in Main Street.
Yeah, I think, I think the contribution is, the old building is, they're cheap, and it's hard to get a small business to come in and build a brand-new building.
Correct.
Put in all the wiring and plumbing and sheet rock and all of that. It, uh, I agree with you, the business would not come back.
Yeah.
And you saw that, uh, in a lot of the large cities, the inner cities were gonna pop up.
James, do you, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
You covered it real well, Bert. I mean, I don't know where the misconception came that we were talking two billion, gonna use those two for examples. Square footage, flat square footage counts, so many of them count for a high-rise. And what we're trying to tell you is we're bumping that. It's about six, is it about six thousand square foot counts?
Yes.
Three of those make one, or five of those make one? Six thousand square foot buildings.
What about, I'm sorry?
How many does it take?
Six.
Six?
Six, or, or in excess of two stories. Or, or in excess of two stories.
Or does it require more fire plugs in the fire truck?
No. Actually, Richard, our, our fire hydrant distribution and our flow rates on them are really great for a town this size. We, we have, ISO looks at three things, and I don't want to go into long, boring detail here, but fifty percent of our rate comes from the capabilities of the fire department. Forty percent comes from the capabilities of our water department. Ten percent comes from the capabilities of our communication, from how it's listed into the phone book to how each firefighter gets the call. So they look at everything from the time a person calls with a need to us arriving and what we're able to do once we get on that scene. So, and, and James pointed out the six thousand square foot, and it does get very complicated because there again, they base that on construction. Eckrodt's building up here is a wood-framed construction, requires, I think, six thousand gallons a minute of fire flow. Do we have that? We do not. And I'm just going to tell you upfront, we do not. And, and the ladder truck, I think there's some misconception also, a, if you look up ladder truck in Webster's, I'm sure you're going to get a truck like New York City uses that is huge, has no pumping capability, no hoses. It, it is strictly designed to, for an engine to pump water to it, and it's really an aerial stream device. A ladder truck that Hennessy would get is technically called a quint. We never use that word because nobody knows what a quint is. It's just a ladder truck. A quint is a fire engine, carries the full load of hoses, carries a water tank to get started with, plus has the ladder on it. So that's what we would be looking at. So a ladder truck would also double as a fire engine for any structural fire.
It's sort of a crossfade between a pumper and a New York City ladder truck.
Exactly, exactly. And the type of, the type of truck we would look at would be a single rear axle, wouldn't be a tandem. That truck is a platform truck, so you see the guy standing up there? Ours would not be a platform. You know, you're looking at probably a million and a half for that truck, don't you think, James? The way it's sitting? And we're, that exceeds our needs, so...
The Hennessy ladder truck will have just a ladder, not a platform?
It would not have a platform like that, I don't think. Now, we haven't gotten that far because we're not ready. But you would still have the aerial stream device, the big nozzle, you would still, there would still be for personnel to be up on top. But that, that platform truck, you can put two to three personnel in, like the picture shows two. And I don't, I don't know if that's what I was in. They took me up in it at one point at that fire. I don't know if I, I don't know if one of those is me or not.
It, it could be, but because I remember you being up there, yeah.
I remember when that happened and that broke through those windows, it was a pretty, pretty scary moment.
Those old buildings, that wood is like a bomb, once it catches fire. Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure it wasn't an emergency.
The Enid fire truck is a used, their ladder truck is a used, is used, and they purchased it for one point one million. Used. Do you think Hennessy can buy it, the truck, that quint truck for eight hundred and fifty thousand? Is that a used truck or...?
Well, I'm estimating, Richard, that would be a new truck. James and I know of a fire department that bought a used ladder truck, and they had to put another twenty-five or thirty thousand, I think, in it to, to bring it back up to certification. In all honesty, him or I, either one, want a ladder truck. But when we're, I mean, it's not a million-dollar toy we're going to go play with. When the, because the, you have to have the, the hydraulics and the ladder certified on those every year. Currently, we have our pumpers tested every year. Maybe you saw them down here. They just did it within the last month. And we have to have our pumps certified every year that they will pump the capacity that they're designed to pump to keep our ISO rating. We have a ladder truck, we have to have the pump, and the ladder certified on it as well. In addition, we test all ten thousand feet of hose every year that has to hold two hundred and fifty pounds of pressure for twenty minutes, so... I, I know I probably got off on more information.
No, I appreciate all this information. It's a big, you know, for me, I kind of, I look at the dollars and quarters and dimes and nickels, and I appreciate your lengthy explanation. And I think, going through this tonight, it has helped me a lot to understand what's going on at the fire department.
Okay. Let me tell you something else, and again, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm giving too lengthy, but I, I think this is very important. Something else that is a major contributor to our ISO rating being low, he has been with me since we were an eight. He and I have kind of overseen going from an eight to a three. There are fourteen other guys out there, because a major portion of our rating is training and training and training. All of our guys have achieved firefighter one training. Some of our guys have gone out on their own, not required by us, and achieved firefighter two training. Some of them have attained their basic EMT licenses. And this is stuff that, yeah, we pay for them to get back and forth, and we pay for the classes, but they pay for the time away from their families and their kids' ballgames to go do this. So this isn't anything that Bert's done or James has done. It's been a collective process, and...
I would suggest putting a lot of this information you have discussed this evening on your website.
Well, you know, I...
We don't usually tutor our board. Why would we don't tutor our own board about Richard?
Well, I worked in, I worked in sales, and when you worked in sales, that's what you did every day of the week.
And I've heard that, I've heard that at other meetings, that if you don't tutor our board, nobody else is. And like Bert said, I really don't want a ladder truck. I really don't want to do this project, adding on to the station. It would be easier for Bert and I to say goodbye, and we walk away. We've got our years in, more, double our years in than we had to do. But we worked hard to get to a three. We want to maintain that three, and we want to leave our younger guys in really good shape. That's why we're proposing this. We want to leave it. And the other misconception that I've been hearing floating around is the addition is a million-dollar addition. We set at least a million. It may come in at one-two, it may come in at one-three, one-four. We don't know yet. We haven't gone out for bids. Construction prices are going up, so at least a million. So I'm not going to, I don't want to be locked in so when it comes in at one, two, three, four, that you guys go, hell, you said you could do it for a million. We don't know. And we may have to wait six months and let some of this cost come down. But we know we've got to get started now to be ready for that truck.
I will, I will tell you this, and just kind of adding a little bit on to what he said, we, we have money in our Kingfisher County Sales Tax Fund. Everybody's aware of that. James and I, either one, are going to spend all of that money. We're not going to, we are not, we've got that money because we're tight and very frugal. And if the building comes in too high and we're bumping, getting close to not leaving the reserve we think we need to leave, we're probably going to say, we're going to wait. It's my guess. Do you agree with me or...?
Agreed. We probably wait at least six months to a year to see a cost come down. So we're not out there saying, hey, we got one-six, we got one-nine sitting down there, we're going to blow it. That's, no way are we saying that. But what we are saying is if we put one-five in this building, one-point-five million, and we only got four hundred thousand left down there, the town's going to have to have some skin in that ladder truck. So in your long-term planning, that's what we're asking, is for you to work that truck in to your long-term planning. Because we still have brush pumpers to replace, not right now, but five years from now, six years from now, yes, we could have a brush pumper to replace. Right now, we're good, we're good in the rural area.
How much is that going to cost?
Brush pumper, a hundred and fifty, nine-seventy? Not, I mean, a, a brush truck. Is that what you're asking, per truck?
A grass truck, basically.
I'm confused. I did, I heard you, I thought you said pumper truck.
No. Brush pumper.
Brush pumper.
Grass, grass fire truck.
Okay.
The little trucks that you see, like the, they're five, four, they're at five-fifties, and they carry five hundred gallons or so, that's the ones we're talking about.
Okay.
And other than that, we, we're in pretty good shape for the rural area, so that's why we think it's time to do the station, get it ready, especially since all the construction you're seeing work of us out there on Scotty's Hill.
And it doesn't look like it's going to end, and I hope it doesn't, you know, for the sake of the community.
So we, we never intended for you to think that we're trying to pull something, that we want a big play for you. That's not what we're about. We haven't been about that for combined eighty years with us, so...
Well, if I had had this explanation in that last month, I wouldn't have to raise these issues.
We thought everybody understood.
No, I didn't understand.
We asked any more questions, so...
Yeah.
Next time, next time we meet, when we ask if you have any questions, please ask them.
And a lot of it is like this, I talked to Bert about the third year, you know, just like me, I was on the board for eight months, never heard anything about the fire station expanding. We come to December meeting, boom, you know, here we are expanding. Nobody ever said anything in eight months I've been on the board that we're even thinking about. All of a sudden, it's like, here, you know, we're building this building, you know? I've talked to, I've talked to lawyers and everything else about this, you know? And we can, there's stuff we can do with Towne Hennessy, we'd like it. We can say, no, you ain't building that building here. You guys, you guys can go somewhere else and do it.
That wouldn't be good.
So, you know, there is something you can't say, but the Towne Hennessy don't want that, you know? So, you know, that's what I looked at, it was just kind of thrown on us. And, you know, I had to go do homework, you know, you know, and study all that. I didn't know, I've come to her and asked her about the county sales tax, and I called the home mail lawyer and talked to him, you know, and got the clarification that I felt comfortable with, you know? So it did, and it's just not, you know what I'm saying? It wasn't, it seemed like to me it was kind of thrown on us, which it wasn't. You guys had planned it, I understand.
This hasn't, it's hard to explain without hurting feelings, but it's something we've been in the works for several years, five plus years, making ready for a ladder truck when the time comes. So to us, this is in the planning all the time, and we come out with this, look how much stink it's already caused. If we'd have come out with this a year ago, said maybe a year from now, I don't know what the heck you guys would have been thinking. So I thought we explained it that night while we needed...
Yeah, and you, and I understood the expla- explanation, but you know, I'm sitting here, we've got five hundred thousand dollars, we had to go borrow for our, our water plant out here, and we had to do this and do that. You know, we're looking for a half million here, two hundred thousand over here, and a lot of people think that Towne Hennessy has to come up with that to build that building, which...
We explained the county sales tax fund, we're giving you a deal.
And that's, and that's what I'm saying, it's good to do it, you know? I, I had to go study that, because it wasn't, you know, it didn't rest like that to me sitting here to me, you know?
But you repeat your statements, you know, sometimes perception is reality to that person. You know, I came through the front door and boom, here's this one-point-eight million-dollar proposal, and we had to police pension, and then the employees thing, all at one time. And I'm not sure of the budget.
I got home, I got home thirty minutes after I got home from that meeting, why in hell does the Towne Hennessy need a ladder truck? Man, there wasn't no mention about getting a ladder truck, it was future planning, you know?
And we're not ready, or it would have been on the agenda, but we're not ready, and, and we, we hope that that's down the road three to five years at least. And what we're trying to do is be proficient in planning and being ready for when that day does come, so...
I, I think it would be a good idea, I think Barbara, I'm with the recording here, that the community, the two of us seem to have had the same reaction, you know, boom, here's one-point-eight million, you walk through the door, boom. That people understand. It's unfortunate, people don't subscribe to the Kingfisher paper. It's our hometown paper for all practical purposes, and I know a lot of people get it here in town, but a lot of people don't. Because I asked them, do you see this in the Kingfisher paper? No, I don't get the Kingfisher paper.
And I, I understand your perception that here we walk in with architects' drawings, and so it looks like, wow, this is, this is, we didn't even know this was coming. But let me kind of explain that. The, the architect, up to now, has not charged us a red dime. They have provided these preliminary plans at no cost, hoping that they get the job. One reason we wanted these was we wanted an estimate to see what construction costs would, would run, because without that estimate, we had no idea if it was even feasible. The second thing is, we wanted those drawings to bring to this board and to the county commissioners to show the board what we had in mind. We didn't want to come in here and say, hey, we want to add on to the fire station, and we may go so many feet this way and this way and this way. But rather than do that, we brought in, we brought in a plan.
That's the absolutely correct way to do things. You, a person cannot ask for money, whether it's a, like in a, going for a grant, you have to tell people what you had in that. The drawings did that.
Okay. Have you got anything else on that, Richard? That was your agenda item and...
No, you've explained it to me. And the other three items I've got there, the legacy giving and the grants, we're sort of anticipating the January meeting. I thought we were going to talk about the, the pavilion and, and things that the communities do, we'd like to see. And so I, what, what I have here is just information, I think probably, I don't know if I'll distribute it or not, I didn't have the time to get it distributed, or get it to Tiffany where she could distribute it. I don't know if I want to distribute it this evening or not. Let me distribute some of it, let's do it that way. What it is, is grants and community development. For some reason, for some reason, this is the Community Foundation of Oklahoma, their annual report, and got mailed to Tiffany instead of me. But what I'm going to do is make a copy, this is their, they have a list of their endowment funds. They got a hundred and fifty-five million, and here's all their endowment funds that they got. Kingfisher's in there. And Mr. Enix is in here. Ralph Enix? He's in here. He's got a bunch of funds. Ralph in Kingfisher, there's the, Kingfisher Education, Ralph Enix Designated Endowment Fund. Ralph Enix Hennessy Education Foundation Designated Fund.
It's probably the scholarship fund.
There's a forest station in here. And when I first came to Hennessy, you know, it became obvious that, it's always a question of money. And I think what I'm gonna do is save this back. I think it would be better, Tiffany, to wait till we have the community-wide building. This, I'm gonna go ahead and distribute, this is one, two, three, can you distribute these, Katie?
I'm sorry, you're table 108. I'm not even looking, I'm just.
Table 108.
That's, you can see at the top of their advertising, they got their legacy foundation. And they even have a, where you, where you can send a donation. WWW dot Community Foundation of Oklahoma dot organization, the chosen museum. So Kingfisher is really aggressive with this. Let's pass this down. I can distribute this a couple more times, I've just distributed this. I've distributed this for, this is Kingfisher's library. This is Kingfisher's visitor center. The visitor center, what they did, they got one large contribution of 200,000, but they went after more funds. And what people did is they, like if you had the Hennessy library, if you divide it up in rooms and say, if you make a donation such and such amount, that room will be in your name. So there's two families. You have a question, Katie? This is Oklahoma City's Legacy Foundation. They've got over a billion dollars in their foundation. They're not turn page. Sorry, Katie. The, I showed, this is the Community Foundation of Oklahoma in this report I got. Thank you, Katie. And this is the, Barbara, this is the, this is the Cherokee Strip Community Foundation.
Yes, yeah.
They had the article on the front page of the Enix paper, they distributed over a million dollars from their endowment funds. So what I'm trying to make the point here, that's something we need to tap into. The grants are nice and we pursue those. What's nice about the legacy thing, their endowment funds, when you go after grants, they're generally for capital projects. Whereas an endowment, a endowment will carry, you can pay for current expenses. So you pay the current expenses for a library, current expenses for a museum. And in here, there's one, they get one far department, one town, they get the far departments. So what I'd like to see is, we have these legacy giving foundations. One, maybe one for the police department, one for parks, cemetery endowment funds, but that's very common. And what the whole idea, when I started pushing this, that makes funds available. And then you can do, you know, that helps with payroll and helps with doing other things. Maybe get that pavilion built, far across the library and, and update it and see what we can do with it. I got these materials, again, I want to repeat, I thought we would, that would be part of the January planning meeting. So that's why I got, ran these off Tiffany and distributed it. But it's something to think about when we get to that point.
Exactly. Okay.
So now, Richard, are you talking about us going and trying to get money from these funds? Or people creating?
People create these funds.
Are you talking about us creating funds?
Who's us?
The town.
No.
Individuals.
No, just individuals, yeah.
Individuals.
Well, okay, so because, like, we tried to set up that one for the rodeo grounds, but it said that we had to have how much?
10,000.
$10,000 to start it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, how do we get by with, you know what I mean? Because we only had, cause I still have those checks.
You know, you have marvelous solution on getting that project done. That you just finished talking about. But some of these foundations, they'll waive that requirement. The requirement to have 10,000. They'll give you, you know, a period. Now Scotty Hike has set up a 10,000, $10,000.
Hennessy United has set that up.
So.
But that's just one.
If you want to do the video, that's another 10,000.
Actually, we set it up as a general fund for that. I mean, it's, you know, it's not a designated fund.
But to have a designated one, you have to do another 10,000 and they're not gonna.
Anthony, you can, you gotta throw your fish hook in the water to catch a fish. You can set up, say, we're gonna have a cemetery fund, we're gonna have a parks fund, we're gonna have a far department fund, ground police fund. You need $10,000 to start it. You might get somebody to pop in here and give you that 10,000. The other, the other alternative is to have like Kingfisher, if you look at Kingfisher, they have a community fund. It's just referred to as a community fund. So people put their money in that community fund, but maybe there's a plaque at the library or a plaque at the park, like the Lot Memorial Lot. Hey, you recognize them. Hennessy Park, that, I can't think of that lady's name, they gave the park to the.
Ailer, Anette B. Ailer.
You can put the money just so that people are recognized, you know?
And, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you told me at one point, some of the foundations don't require that $10,000 minimum.
They want your business, they want your business.
Am I right about that or?
Depending on the group, you can get that waived or maybe get a grace period or something.
I see.
Of course, they, they know there's going to be more, they're kind of like the bank, they want more deposits, you know? It, it betters their side of the bread too.
So Richard, or did that cover all of your three agenda items?
Yeah, it covered, there isn't, thank you.
Okay. Item H, accept or reject any resignations, not receive priority in the agenda. New business, citizens comments.
Do you need to accept her resignation?
No.
No, I, I don't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't have to do that anymore. We vote no anyway.
I second that.
Any new business, citizens comments, anybody got anything? Good to have you all with us tonight.
Bert, I'll have a couple of things on that, that last thing.
Counselperson reports.
Maybe it's been addressed, but there's all those plastic bags north of the dollar store. And I don't know if you've talked with them or not. I know there's stuff that happens that not always over. I went in and talked to the manager, I felt sorry for her because she got hit with an 18 wheeler delivery truck and then two customers came up wanting stuff. But I asked her, I walked around the building, I said, where are all these plastic bags coming from? And they have a container back there where they put, there's a lot of cordboard in there and I saw some plastic bags in there. The manager was saying that it's from the customers and from the people in town, that there's a prevailing south wind and it's blowing it. But I've never seen another, I've seen a lot of family dollar stores and other general dollar stores and I've never seen that much plastic.
And I, I, I have noticed that too. And I've wondered where it's coming from because dollar general bags are yellow.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of white bags out there. And I, I don't.
From the North Quake Stop, cause their dumpsters right up.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if that's not, if someone's not closing their dumpsters, then that's blowing out and carrying up there. But I know exactly what you're talking about, cause it's pretty unsightly.
It's unsightly. And I think there's a dumpster, I haven't checked it lately, but I know there's one that probably live.
Now, brand, well, they're brand new, they should all have lids.
I'll have to go back there and check it, you know, it's a little more detective.
Tiffany, could you have some of the people check, some of our employees check those dumpsters around that area and see that they've got lids and see that the businesses are, cause I know it's tempting just to leave them open and go out and dump trash and leave them open, but then the wind does do that. Maybe we could encourage them to keep them closed. Other than that, I, I definitely see the problem you're talking about, but I don't know what the solution is.
I don't know where the bags are coming from. I thought.
Some reason you noticed it more this year than you have in the previous year.
Exactly.
We've had some pretty dusty winds too.
We've had some good winds and.
It's probably bringing up.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you.
Those bags have been there since I came here, moved back in 2013 and there's always been bags.
Yeah. But it's worse now than I've ever seen it. The, I don't know when, over there were Scotty's building and they took out trees, if that changed our wind. But the fire department's had, I think, three calls of a odor smell up in the north end of town. A gas type odor and it's the wind carrying from the disposal well, carrying fumes. And it gets pretty pungent up there that we've never, we've never noticed before. So I'm wondering if taking out those trees didn't change how the wind circulates in that area.
The, the other thing is the plaque for the cemetery chapel. Where are we on that?
It's here. Where, did, they said they could come hang it for us?
There was a miscommunication, they thought we were gonna hang it. So I called them and they haven't called back. I'll call them tomorrow.
We can't even hardly pick it up, it's so heavy. And so we were gonna have them, see if they would hang it for us, because it's so heavy. But it's here.
Good. That's all I know.
Okay. Cliff?
Anything?
Harold? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, this will be a meeting of the Hennessy Utility Authority, 14th, 2022, roll call please.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Item two is consider approval of consent agenda, minutes of the meetings. Approval of claims as follows, December purchase orders, 2,006, 54, 59. January purchase orders, 110,002, 42, 27. January meter deposit refunds, I guess somebody moved out of town.
We just, we just stopped and refunded.
Okay. Treasurers report. Any comments or additions to those reports? If not, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, citizens comments, anybody? Discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. Discussion with possible action to adopt a pay scale for employees to implement into the employee handbook. This will be the same thing, pardon me, I'm texting my wife, cause I don't have a ride, tell her we're about done. But anyway, uh, this will be for the employees that are paid out of the utility authority budget rather than the general fund. Correct, Tiffany?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a pay scale for employees implement into the employee handbook.
I second that. Roll call.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Item B is discussion with possible action to accept the 2021 Hennessy Utility Authority audit. That was also in this audit, appear correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2020, 2021 Hennessy Utilities Authority audit.
Ziggy.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item C is accept any resignations, not receive priority of posting in the agenda. Item five, new business. Sit in the comments. Counselperson reports, Richard? Anything? Harold? Cliff?
No.
I put a employee handbook, address, employee handbook, in you guys' packet, if you guys could review that for next month. An employee handbook, it's in your packet. I put it in there, so if you guys could review it for next month.
Where are we going to have the?
The seminar room.
Seminar room, the.
Planning meeting?
Planning meeting. The seminar room at the school, you got it?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
To the meeting.
Roll call.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.